Great, we're gonna go ahead and start this evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Meet the Candidates night. We are broadcasting on the local access channel seven. We are having a few technical issues with Zoom and feeding that information into the cable network. This sometimes happens and I apologize, but we'll try to get to public questions at some point as well. We'll be meeting the select board candidates just in a few moments and then the school board candidates at 7:30. My name's Bruce Burgoyne and my job is really to facilitate the questions and try to pace us to cover as much as we possibly can. I did prepare some possible questions that I shared with the candidates, but questions from the public are really what I was hoping for. And once we get that working, and it may end up working through chat or some other methodology, but public questions will be given priority. That's the priority here. I will say that this is recorded and it will be available on our YouTube channel. We may also have some time for candidates to ask each other questions. I'm gonna try to keep things moving along and one of the things I do in moving along items is to try to avoid duplicative questions as much as possible. Candidates will have a minute and a half to answer each question and I have a yellow card that will say, you've got 30 seconds, wrap it up. And I will say that I'll dispense with all of the timing and the cards if we develop a pace as a group that seems to be working for us. But other than that, to make sure everybody fairly gets time, we'll do it that way. I'll try to rotate who answers the question first. And for tonight's purposes, I'm just gonna go clockwise, so I'll be starting with Aaron, who will introduce himself in a minute. And then the next question, we'll start with Carol and then the third question with Sean. And we'll just try to go around like that. Now, if somebody asks a particular individual a question, that's where we'll go. You can participate by calling 929-436-2866 or using the Zoom link, which is found at reedfield.org. There's also a local telephone number that feeds into that 929 number and that's a 685-1813. This information is on our website right on the front page. You can identify yourself or not, but really we're reserving tonight for questions from Reed Field residents and voters. That's the intent tonight. Our ground rules are very simple. We could go through a list of them, but my operating rule is let's just be neighborly and courteous. If we do that, we'll be just fine and I'm expecting that anyhow. As I mentioned earlier, this will be on YouTube and we're live tonight on cable channel seven. So now we're gonna start by meeting the candidates who are running to serve you on select board. And we'll start with Aaron. Please introduce yourself. Tell us about your interest in running.
Well, howdy folks. Thank you, Bruce. My name's Aaron Neely, candidate for select board. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Reed Field. I went through the Reed Field Elementary School and graduated from Miranda Cook in 97. After that, I got a bachelor's degree in sociology from Brandeis University. Since then, I've lived around the country in a few different states. I've worn a few different hats over the years, but mainly I've been in technology sales. I've been gone for maybe 13 to 14 years, but Reed Field is definitely a part of who I am. I'm back in town. I'm hoping to start a business here. I'll be opening a medical cannabis caregiver store on Main Street. We'll be helping medical patients with pain management and veterans and others with PTSD. I'd like to see a Reed Field that is truly open for business. We've got an opportunity to really revitalize the town and get people really excited about living here. To do that, we'll need to get everyone to the table, make sure everyone's voices are being heard, especially folks on some of the back roads. Everybody has something they can contribute and we need to hear what that is. If elected, I will help move Reed Field more towards the traditional small-town American values of business and community. These are the things that really bring us together, but to succeed, we'll need everyone in town working together towards this common goal. Please help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Carol?
Hi, I'm Carol Dornbus and my husband and I bought the house just down the street with the iron fence 25 years ago. And since that time, we've done a lot of work to try to preserve our little niche of history in Reed Field. And when we first bought the house, about 20 neighbors came and showed up to help us clean up the yard and the home. And that was just our first introduction of how friendly a village we have here in Reed Field and what a special group of people we have locally. Since that time, in the last 25 years, I've been a local pharmacist, retail pharmacist at ASCO and Rite Aid in this middle, mid-main area. Most recently, I'm a pharmacist over at the VA at Togus and love working with the veterans and serving them. More locally, I have two daughters that are graduating high school the same day as the election. And since they hit elementary school, we've been very active in the schools, volunteering in the classrooms, all kinds of different activities at the school. Local church were very involved in community service. So we just wanna give back to the wonderful town and people that have served us. And now our chapter with the schools is somewhat closing and hoping to serve the town of Reed Field as a select board member going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Sean?
Hi, everybody. My name's Sean Keegan. So I have not lived in town as long as these folks, but I've been here for 14 years. I moved here in '07. I actually emigrated from Scotland. I've only been a citizen of this country for three years. I always remember when Susan Collins swore me in, how much she talked about being a part of your community, volunteerism and that civil opportunity we have. So before I became a citizen, I've been working with the Reed Field Rec Board. I started out as the soccer coach. I became the commissioner for soccer seven years ago. I've continued to work as treasurer of the Rec Board, which is something I've enjoyed working with the budget committee, working with the select board on a variety of projects that we've had over the last few years. I continue to help down at the beach. I know it's not perfect yet, but we've got a lot of great plans there. You know, my focus has always been on the youth and the programs that we have and trying to make things better for families in town. But in the last few years, really being down at the ball fields, just working with the whole community, really working with different populations to better the town has been something I've enjoyed a lot. So yeah, that's about me.
Thank you so much, Sean. I'm just gonna sort of prime the pump, if you will, with a question or two and then we're gonna see if we can start to take some questions from the public. I'm just gonna start out with a question and this goes to Carol first and then Sean and then Aaron. This is kind of an extraordinary time. What priorities do you see as important to consider as we deal with the coronavirus pandemic and hopefully its aftermath?
Well, unfortunately, the pandemic impacted a whole lot of people, a whole lot of families. Some with job loss, some with businesses closing, some with decreased profits because they couldn't open their stores. People that had higher costs of childcare because the children were remote and the parents were working, a whole lot of reasons that people are struggling and have been impacted. So I think it's really important that we watch our spending. There's a lot of great projects Reed Field wants to do. I think we have to look at, is this the best time to do them or maybe give some families some time to recover? We need to increase our tax base if we can. It's sad to see some closed storefronts at the depot and downtown, so that might help increase our tax base. It'd be really nice if we could attract more young families to Reed Field. I understand it's really difficult to find a house under the $200,000, $250,000 mark for young families that might be nurses, policemen, you know, hard workers, just trying to have a starter home and there's not much in that market. So it seems it'd be great if we can attract nice young families and be really business-friendly and hopefully watch our spending.
Thank you, Carol. Sean?
Yeah, so I currently work for Department of Labor in the Bureau of Rehabilitation Services. So through COVID, I've seen a lot, a lot. You know, we've seen a variety of changes for lots of people, lots of different people throughout the community. So I think, you know, taking our time, kinda like Carol said, taking our time, really looking at how it's affected this variety of people and the variety of ways and looking at where should we be placing our funding, where should we be taking time, where should we be looking for resources and how do we plant that within our community? I think between, you know, businesses in town, between the school services and the different opportunities there are for grants, we can look at a wide spectrum of things to support people and to continue to help people come out of this pandemic, because it's gonna take a while.
Thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, the pandemic's really been pretty profound. I mean, we're, you know, as a community, we're facing really like kind of an existential crisis here. You know, people have been, we've been really isolated. And so the question is how to kind of reverse that and move that back. And I, again, you know, what I'm hoping to do is to get everyone to the table to really talk about what kind of solutions there are in building community, building local business, getting people excited about living in town. And I think things like around, you know, supporting local enterprise, supporting local farms in particular, I think it's sad to see places like, you know, we had Fikes Custom Cutting go out of their retail business. We can't afford to lose places like that, the local places, you know, and yeah, they're, you know, they're competing with Hannaford. But what it takes is, I think, again, a concerted effort, everyone being on the same page of wanting to support our local community. And so I'm hoping to get the discussion going around that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna take a moment here and just kind of check with my technical folks and find out if we can take calls from the public yet or questions. Is there a voice in the sky that's gonna tell me yes or no on that?
Probably no.
Probably no at this point, so I'll continue. And so this question, and probably to kind of stand in for this, in a couple of questions will allow you to question one another, because you're the folks who are trying to connect with the community and talking with each other. You probably have questions that are at the top of your mind, but we'll get a couple more questions going first. And so this one will go to Sean first. Sean, what are your personal goals for Reed Field over the next three years and what would you like to see the town accomplish during your term?
So three years is not a long time, especially when we, you know, in these sort of times, I guess. I think one of my goals is really just to make sure the people we have here stay here. The people that, you know, love this community get to share in more experiences in the community. So I know that, you know, we've got some action towards developing the ball fields a little bit more in town. I know we really have some great ideas about how to make the beach more accessible for a lot of variety of users. And I think that, you know, in my conversations in the comprehensive plan committee, we're really looking at the whole town, you know, and how many areas of the town we can impact and how those different ways in which we can have conversations. So I think hopefully the completion of the comprehensive plan in line with, you know, everybody's desires to keep making Reed Field more beautiful, keep making it more welcoming and keeping people that we have here here.
Well, thank you. Perfect timing. I think we're rapidly approaching the point where maybe we can dispense with the card, but we'll go a couple more questions to make sure that's working for us. Aaron, we'll go right to you with the same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Sure, well, if you could, Bruce.
Yeah. What are your personal goals for Reed Field over the next three years and what would you like to see the town accomplish during your term?
Right. Well, I think, I think the kind of a main goal would be to get a grant for business development and really get some money to hire, you know, an analyst to really take a look at, you know, what kind of existing infrastructure we have. I mean, we've got world-class academic institutions. We've got all these summer camps around here. What can we do to leverage the existing infrastructure that we have to the greatest benefit in terms of the local economy, but also the local community? And to, you know, provide folks with a lot, a lot of options in town. You know, I'm going house to house last year, talking to the constituents. You know, a lot of people say they'd like to see more happening in town. And I think, you know, from a number of perspectives, that is really the main thing that I'm hoping to accomplish, really.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Carol?
Yes, I believe just definitely continue with our great quality of life here with the lakes, the trails, the great schools and the schools to continue with strong academics, not just great sports and great theater, but continue with their strong academic performance. And I think that's what attracts people to this area when they're raising their family too. I guess our student population has gone down like 9% in the last five years and I think that's kind of a trend that's been happening. So I'd like to see, again, the young folks and young families move in and more support of the small businesses. I know the messenger is a very great tool, maybe something, the last page, you know, a bunch of ads of our local people, local contractors, local businesses, something in the post office, maybe highlighting some of our small businesses from time to time. There's a lot of them out there. We just don't know where they are. A lot of them are hidden in homes and they're really wonderful. And some of them, you just don't know how to reach them. So support of small businesses would be terrific and attracting young families.
Thank you, Carol. And who did I ask that last question first to? Was it Sean? So Aaron, tell us about your perspectives on town services and taxes.
Thank you, Bruce. I think we need to minimize, minimize the tax impact, especially on the older folks. You know, there's definitely, there's people, we need to be always aware that there are people living on marginal incomes. So to that, to that effect, any kind of, any kind of additional services, I feel like, need to be done with private funds. I think the, you know, the fundraising done by the union meeting house, which has been extremely impressive, I think has demonstrated that there is a fairly significant pool of private funding that is there in town. And I think if we approach the right people, you know, with the right projects, that there is available funding for things like, you know, the ball field. I know that, you know, like a softball field for the girls is something that, you know, a number of people had mentioned that, you know, was on the docket, but, you know, but basically it was just the boys that got the baseball field. But I think that, you know, through donations and volunteering, it'd be great to see that happen. But yeah, along those lines, I think, you know, additional things, especially because of the COVID and the budget constraints, need to be done with private money and not public funds.
Thank you, Aaron. Carol?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The question was, tell us about your perspectives on town services and taxes.
Okay. I think we have a lot to be proud of with our town services. Our department has been terrific, new additions, wonderful. Our library is kind of a central place for people and they have a lot of creativity, a lot of things going on there. So the services, I think, are very well, very good. Taxes, I think, I think there's, if I added right, like 1.3 million in new spending in the budget that we just got a copy of the other day. And I'd like to see the town with budgeting look at being more like a family budget. What do we gain if we do it? What do we lose if we don't? What is the cost and do we have it in the budget? And I guess lastly, do we have to do it now? I think there was one thing, I'm not picking on the library, but something about an egress from the second floor, $50,000 worth. And I don't know if that's coming up now. I don't know if there's an insurance company that's coming, you know, saying that that's a priority now. We've never had one. It doesn't seem like the public is up there and so it's just one of those things that comes up that you wonder if maybe we don't have to do that right now, maybe at a later time when we're trying to recover from the pandemic, just for example.
Thank you. Sean?
Bruce, do you mind just wording the question again for me?
Not at all. Tell us about your perspectives on town services and taxes.
Yeah, so I think, like both you said, the services in town are great. You know, we have a, you know, the fire department are great. We have resources. You know, the lakes are fantastic. We have an abundance of opportunity to do different things and receive appropriate services in town. I think one thing, you know, through our volunteerism that we're missing is that connection with the school and the students at the school and how they might be able to help us in doing some of those things. And like Aaron said, I think fundraising from private people is something that's huge. You know, you mentioned the hopes of a softball field, but we're actively doing that. We're fundraising for that right now, you know? We started that process. We got, we had an ice fishing, youth ice fishing derby, which was our first fundraiser, which we raised over $1,000 towards the planning costs for that, which we're working with Main Development Corporation on making sure that we've taken into the consideration of conservation and we've taken into consideration how it will affect the trails once we do that sort of work. But I think through that, we've realized there's more people in town that want to help with these things and how do we start interacting with them more and how do we start adding to that pool? So that will be something I hope to offset those taxes with reaching out to more people in the community.
Thank you very much. I will say, I don't nod or make eye contact with you when you're talking about budgets and so on and so forth, because it's your job as candidates to know what you're talking about and I'm sure you do, but I don't want to show any particular favoritism or indication of anything else like that. So I can't answer questions. I'm not, I'm not here to do that. I'm here to moderate. So I noticed one or two people looking at me. I will say the chat is working now, so we are getting questions in that way, so I'm able to read questions. Some of them are coming from individuals. I'm not going to read their names, because I don't know if they've told me that I can do that. If we were conversing with them, that would be one thing. So, but the first question, and I believe we go to Carol first this time, is pretty straightforward. What does it mean to make Reed Field more business-friendly?
I think getting the word out there of who we have locally that provides business and what they do. One thought, I remember when we bought our first house, somebody came with a packet. It was like an introduction to the town and it had business cards and it had, these are the hours of the dump, these are the hours of the town, these are the local businesses and addresses and emails. Maybe we can get some senior ambassadors or something to greet the new families in town and provide some of this information. And just make sure we streamline or don't delay in any kind of new businesses that are trying to start up. We don't have a lot of delays in roadblocks. I do think we have to have very firm rules and, you know, the, we don't want to shortcut any of the things that make sure that it's a qualified business and will be good for the town, but to just make sure to streamline the process if we can. I think that would be it.
Okay, great. Sean? Same question.
So the question reads?
And the question reads, what does it mean to make Reed Field more business-friendly?
So I guess I don't have the mindset that Reed Field isn't business-friendly. I guess for me though, that every business in town deserves more support from the community. I know that from peers that have businesses or, you know, different people around town. So I guess really just looking at how, how do we together support the community through those businesses? How do we share whose businesses is around, who's there to provide a service in town, you know, be it from getting a haircut, be it from buying some food or, you know, is it someone that's gonna tar your driveway? You know, there's so many businesses around, but, and I always like to try to call the closest one first, but they're not always the easiest numbers to get a hold of. And, you know, so how do we support that? How do we make sure that we can promote the business that's here and keep going with it?
Thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, echo some of the points these folks have made. You know, a lot of it is just reminding people that there are these businesses in town. And I think, you know, to that, to that effect, we need to kind of almost change the culture of the town in a way to get us to look, to look towards the closest provider of a good or service. I think a lot of people are just, you know, very busy and are not always cognizant of the fact that, you know, there are, you know, people next door who might be, you know, selling, selling what they need. And instead, they go to Hannaford or Walmart. But if we can change the culture, you know, through really a town-wide conversation, I think we can really shift that. You know, one, a good idea I thought would be to, you know, have a section on the Reed Field website where each, you know, each business in town can post a video of what they do, you know, introduce themselves, what they do, you know, what their services are and information about, you know, who they are. And I think that might go a little ways towards, you know, reminding people of, you know, of the fact that there are businesses in town. And I think that, again, that's 90% is just, you know, getting people to look locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. We'll start with Sean with his next question, and again, this is from the public. Since the town is aging, speaking about youth is great, but what do you want to do to help the older generation?
Yeah, so I was running out of time and I didn't get to it, but I think that a big thing around town is, we were talking about housing, right? We're talking about how the availability of affordable housing for young families to come in, but also what's the availability for housing for those that might want to downsize? They don't want to leave this community, but they want to stay here, right? So what's the opportunity to look at that? I also think that engaging the schools, I remember when I was in high school, you know, we would go and we'd help break lawns in the spring. We would go do some shoveling and things like that. And how many more things can we get the youth that we know that we're engaged in to support our aging community? And how do we keep giving them opportunities to stay here? Because I think we don't want people in this community that have grown up here, lived here, to then not know how to stay here. So I think it's a huge issue and I know that there's a lot of HUD development funds out there that different areas around us are tapping into. And so that's something I'm really looking at as well.
Thank you. Aaron?
And, you know, to echo what Sean said, I think, you know, there's a lot of, there is a lot of funding out there that's available, but I think as a town, you know, people who, you know, have ideas about this, I think we could create kind of a commission, sort of like an aging commission, to get, you know, people, everyone to the table, you know, really toss out some ideas. But certainly, you know, encouraging kind of a volunteerism around that, around aging and keeping people in their homes would be, I think, priority number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Carol?
Well, I think, I guess we're going to be having some new assessments of property values coming up. I think our mill rates pretty competitive with everybody else. We're not too much above with not too much growth up and above of some of the other outlying areas. But I think keeping them in their home, that is a factor of not increasing taxes too much. And also make sure, I think the churches locally do a good job with people that are sick in their homes and providing food during the pandemic. Perhaps we can put the young and the old together and maybe, I don't know how it would be facilitated, but have a list of students that wouldn't mind helping mow, helping do errands, helping grocery shop, whatever. I just, something with some of the seniors that have trouble getting out or doing simple projects in their house or in their yard. Just maybe have a to-call list or some teenagers that could have some extra time and give them something to do and help out the community. Just something like that is a place where seniors can call for assistance or help.
Thank you. We're at 7 o'clock, which is halfway there. Doesn't it seem like a long time that we've been here already? I want to salute all of you running for office and putting yourself out there to be a member of any governance board that represents the public is very important. And so I really want to, at this point midway, to just make sure to thank you and to recognize you with everybody who's watching and... with everybody who's watching. And we can see from the Zoom that besides whatever, whatever number's watching us on Channel 7, there are people engaged and watching this. So at this point, I would defer to you is, do any of you have a question that you would like to ask actually yourself and the other two board members? And if not, I can certainly fill in with questions, but I'm, you know, if you have an issue or something you would like to ask a question about that you're curious about everybody's perspective, go ahead and ask it.
Well, I, I could maybe ask, I, I could maybe ask these guys, you know, you know, our neighbors, we're neighboring a lot of towns. I, I think, is there anything that, you know, that Mount Vernon or Wayne or Vianna are doing that, you know, we could perhaps emulate?
So Sean, we'll start with you and then go to Carol and, and Aaron. We'll let you wrap up on your own question. How's that?
Sure, okay.
So go ahead, Sean.
Are there things in towns around us that we could emulate? You know, it's great to be in this sort of Lakes region, this Marana Cook expanding area. The thing about Reed Field is it's Reed Field, you know, we do things our way. We do things in a, in a very, you know, thought, thought out process. And I, I can't think of anything in particular that is not in town that another town does.
Thank you, Sean. Carol?
Sure.
I didn't mean to cut you off, did I?
No, you're good.
Okay, Carol.
I guess I'll just point to maybe Manchester, which I go through every day. Seems businesses are strong. Seems to be a bunch of nice little homes going up in a bunch of different spots. And that's not what I'm seeing here. It seems, you know, Reed Field Insurance was right downtown. That's who we used to use. And Reed Field Insurance is now in Manchester. I'm not sure why that happened. I'm sure it's just more volume of people going by. So that's probably one of the obvious things. I think as far as the other towns, I don't think we're doing anything highly unusual. It seems that we just kind of need to be more friendly to new buildings coming up. You know, as far as maybe some new starter homes and some of these areas, you can just make a nice little cul-de-sac or something for some nice starter homes and get some new families into this wonderful area. And that it's not just for the elite, but also for some younger people too. And keeping the older population in their homes by not increasing spending too much.
All right, all right.
Thank you, Carol. Aaron?
No, I think you're right. I mean, you know, definitely, you know, Manchester does seem to have, have hit something as far as, and it may just be their proximity to Augusta as far as, you know, growth. And that would be nice to see, you know, a little more growth in Reed Field, although we have to do also kind of temper it with, you know, not wanting to change the character of the town. But I do look, in some ways I do look to, you know, places like Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon especially. But they do seem to have, have, you know, a particular kind of a community spirit that I would somehow like to emulate. And it's hard to, you know, it's hard to pinpoint exactly what that is, but the, so that the, the community breakfasts and the sort of a, perhaps a spirit of cooperation that I'm hoping to, you know, maybe emulate in some way. But, but, but Sean's also right that, you know, Reed Field is uniquely Reed Field and, and we need to, you know, push that as well. So anyway.
Thank you. And thank you for the question, Aaron. Carol or Sean, do either of you have a similar kind of question you would like to ask the group as a whole?
No, but can I just comment on the last question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there's been eight houses built on my road in the last two years.
Wow. And what, what road are we on?
Sadie Dunn Road.
Nice.
So it's kind of a couple of houses around the corner of Fog and Sadie Dunn Road, but I'm seeing a lot of that development.
Okay, good.
You know, I think, I don't live on Main Street, so I drive through a lot of the side roads maybe a little bit more. I don't know where you both live. Well, I do know you have the cat in Halloween, so I know your house very well. And I, I do think that the community spirit here is great. I mean, if, if you go to Heritage Days, I mean, that's just so much energy. It's, it's contagious, you know? And you go to the Mason's Breakfast and I'll never forget that I learned to mix a ton of stuff by watching those Masons use their DeWalt drill to mix up the pancake mix. Well, you know what? I use my Ryobi drill to make 20 gallons of chalk hot cocoa for our events now. It was because of that, seeing that community spirit. So I, I see that. I think we do have that here. A lot, yeah. So that was all.
Thank you, Sean. And, you know, both Aaron and Carol, you're welcome to comment as well as a follow-up please.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I just, you know, I, I, I think there's always, you know, those things where it'd be, it'd just be great to increase it more, especially, you know, with the COVID thing. I think, you know, just thinking of new ways to come together, I think is, you know, important thing. And, you know, maybe Heritage Days could be every year. You know, that kind of excitement instead of, you know, every other year. You know, there's things like that. But, but I, your point's well taken, Sean. You're, you know.
Carol, would you, would you like to chime in with anything?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just put something out there in getting signatures or going door to door or even just being around people. The question that's on everybody's mind is what is going on in Reed Field? What's going on with the Emporium? What's going on in town? So I'm just going to put that out there. I've heard some on both sides. I don't know if I know the whole story. I do know there's a big division in the town because of it. I'm hoping that we resolve that. I'm also hoping that there's a really nice building right in the middle of town. And I'm hoping we can find a way to utilize it. Seems like there, there's an article coming up in the vote, Article 38, that is trying to make it impossible for that building to become anything. And I just think that's wrong and that's not the, the nice friendly village that we have here. So I'm hoping the past is past. We're here now. It's a really nice building. What can we do to make it useful and in our community and not let it sit and deteriorate?
Thank you, Carol. We'll go ahead and let Aaron and then Sean chime in as well on, on that comment.
Right, right. Well, I think that, you know, the, that proposed Mill Stream, you know, meeting house could be a great asset. I think, you know, what, what it really takes is a, you know, some more negotiation. I think if we had a real, a new spirit of negotiation, I think we could really come to an accord. I think that everyone could be okay with. But I do think it's a, that would be a great, a great resource, whether it's, you know, yoga classes in the morning or, you know, meet, uh, uh, groups meeting there or, or whatever it might be. That, that's a, you know, potential community resource that absolutely should be taken advantage of. It just, again, it, we're just going to require a new spirit of negotiation, you know, rather than litigation, it seems like to me. Thank you.
Sean?
So I don't really have a, the history knowledge, I guess, about the, the Emporium building and, but I think that's, that's small potatoes when you look at the grand scheme of like the Depot situation and, you know, some, just grander, some of the businesses that have closed and just lay vacant. And, you know, you see that beautiful Historical Society building, right? You know, that's such a nice place when you come down after dropping your kids off at school every day. And then either next couple of buildings, you're, it's a shame that it's, it's come to that. And I think it's not just the Emporium. It's those, those, I think we have a lot of different buildings in town that obviously could benefit from some plan. And, you know, we'll follow the process that people are going to vote for and go along with and, and see what that, that brings us.
Great. Thank you. We'll now go to, hi.
Sandy, is it?
No, it's not. This is candidate's night and it's, we're broadcasting actually. Thank you so much for dropping by. Okay, great. We'll go back to some questions here just to try to hit some more points. And the question, and I, and I've kind of lost track with who I started with, so I'm just going to go. I guess, Aaron, would, would you be next, do you think? Does that make sense?
I, I, I don't know.
Okay, we'll, we'll just start there. We'll, we'll get around, okay? So the question is, do you see any significant goals the select board as a whole ought to consider or items that you would like to see elevated as priorities?
Items we'd like to see elevated as priorities? Well, I mean, for me, I'd like to see, I guess the, the, really the, the business issue is, is the biggest one for me. You know, I keep coming back to it, but the, you know, the ability of the town to come together with basically some new guiding principles, really with a common goal, I think is pretty much the most important, the most important thing in moving forward over the next three years, over the next five and 10 years. And I think, you know, obviously the select board, the select board's going to lead that, you know, along with the planning board, but I think focusing on developing the, 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 the local economy, getting everybody on board, getting the, kind of the culture of the town, shifting the culture of the town towards supporting the local economy, encouraging people to start their own businesses here, I think would be pretty much the most exciting thing we can do, the thing that'll, that'll make people really, really the most excited to live here and, and to stay here. So thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Carol? And I can reread that if it's, if you need me to.
Go right ahead.
Okay, great. Do you see any significant goals the select board as a whole ought to consider or items that you would like to see elevated as priorities?
I would think just welcoming different points of view, welcoming inclusion into the process. I do like the secret ballot idea that you do seem to have now in that if somebody's in a room and people have to raise their hand and own a vote that might be very controversial, I think that's fantastic. Gives a little more privacy to people's true thoughts. And just, you know, think really long and hard about the spending that we do do and keep it under control.
Thank you, Carol. Sean?
I think one of my favorite parts of the town and some things I hear from other people that have moved here from Google searches is the beach. And I think it's probably the most underutilized resource that this town has. And it connects so beautifully to our trails. It, it's right there on Main Street, off the, off the sidewalks. And I think it can be used in a variety of ways. And I think we can, we can really develop that to host, you know, whether it be events or different pop-up businesses or, or whatever that looks like. But I feel like it's a, it's a focal point. It's in, it's in town. It's really accessible and we got to use it more. So that, that's, that would be something for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. So I'll put this question next to Carol first. And the question is, how can more people be encouraged to be involved in town governance?
Big, good question. In fact, I was on the school board when my girls were entering school. I went to pick up a ballot to send in and there were like a very big lack of names for school board. And I put the girls in a wagon and I went door to door and I said, write me in, let's go. And it does seem that we're still struggling to get some names on there from time to time in certain elections. I love the Messenger. To be honest with you, I have not been one that got it. But I think if we can make that more accessible, maybe having printed copies at the post office, like we do some of these other things, it's loaded with what the planning board is up to. It's, it's just loaded with local information. I think it's fabulous. It's just for a lot to access it online might be a kind of a challenge. But if we can have that at low cost available to people to pick up, I think they get the information on what's going on locally and that may inspire them if something, you know, they maybe didn't know what was happening in town, might encourage them to get more active.
Carol? Sean?
Can you repeat the question, Bruce?
Sure. How can more people be encouraged to be involved in town governance?
So I think, you know, there's so much going on everywhere right now and it impacts so much in the small footprint of Reed Field that encouraging anybody to participate in any conversation, these, these sort of evenings is going to be critical. And I think continuing to spread our awareness of events through different media, you know, be it these Zoom situations or be it that we use our Facebook, our website, the Messenger. I think postcards are probably really underutilized. It's the cheapest thing to put in the mail. I think, you know, we could get, doing some of that. But really just make sure we give people the ample opportunity to engage. And I think, you know, with our TV and Zoom and we're, we're doing okay. And sometimes I think we have to remember that not everybody has access. Not everybody has availability at that time. So making sure we, we give enough notice is really important too.
Okay, great. Aaron, so to you, how can more people be encouraged to be involved in town governance?
Oh, well, I'd definitely like to echo what these guys have said as well, in terms of like, you know, reaching out to people with media, you know, like to, you know, maybe raise the possibility of there being sort of a, you know, a sign outside the town office, maybe with messages to the, to the town. As people, you know, drive by, they could, you know, if there's any kind of announcement or, or a thing coming up. But also to, you know, identify and integrate, you know, new residents as well as people come in. I think it's important to, to get them on board as far as, you know, the town culture and then what's going on to get them kind of ramped up immediately into, into what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. So we'll go back to you again just to check if anyone has a question they want to ask each other or, or a subject to kind of toss out there as we had in the past. Go ahead, Carol.
I have one that kind of goes along the last question. I don't know if the town has a Facebook page. I know the Historical Society does and I know there's one about if you're from Reed Field that I do find some local stuff, but just, you know, current things going on in town and current business openings and meetings and stuff, just to remind people some of the activities, even some of the sports, something where just to know what's going on in town to take advantage of the Union Meeting House and some of their music events and other things going around in different areas that might be kind of fun. Maybe there is one and I just do not have it yet.
Yeah, we have a great one.
Do you?
Yeah, the town. I mean, I don't run it, but yeah, the town's Facebook page is, is good.
Okay, great.
I think it's pretty engaging. I find a lot of, it's kind of how I learn about some of the happenings, I would say.
Aaron, do you have something to add to that?
Let's see. I mean, I, I listen to, just in terms of getting everybody engaged?
Well, it was kind of Carol's question. She was asking if there was a Facebook question and then the conversation kind of went into Hollywood.
Oh, right. Well, but also, you know, for people who aren't on Facebook, I know, you know, Facebook's pretty ubiquitous, but you know, for the people that aren't. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a really good question about how, you know, to, to really spread the word about, you know, town happenings. Again, I just, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, I don't know if the solution is to have a sign on, on the, outside the town office, but it might be nice to have a, a vehicle for being able to communicate directly with the residents in, in a, in a way that wasn't the internet. But Sean's right, you know, postcards?
Yeah.
That can be great because you don't even have to open that. You just open your mailbox and there it is. And then people get the message that way. I think that's a, that's a fantastic idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. So we'll put this question to Sean first. And we're just one or two questions at most away from final comments for the evening. So Sean, are there some matters or trends that aren't directly related to governance happening in town or not happening that you'd like to see encouraged?
Yeah, so I, I think I mentioned earlier, I really hope that engaging with the school and with the different clubs, organizations and kind of getting them all to work a little bit more together on projects and, and the community. So, you know, in terms So, you know, in terms of having, um, high school kids help with different projects or elementary kids, you know, beautification of the South Road, I know they do a little bit of that there, too. And so how we can keep working on that, but also how, you know, all these wonderful community committees within the community that we have, you know, we have the age-friendly committee, the conservation committee, um, trails committee, uh, the rec board, and we all have very similar-minded goals for town. Um, and, and it's all about working together. And I think, you know, if we can have them interact more frequently, um, to, to develop plans or to be part of what's next and how do we maintain and sustain what we have, I think that'll be really, um, valuable for the town.
Great. So Aaron, and I'm gonna repeat the question each time just because it's a longer question. Are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to governance happening in town or not happening that you'd like to see encouraged?
Right. And I, I would like to see, uh, Bruce, basically the, that, uh, a more inclusive, I guess, more inclusive, active culture, uh, in Reedfield. And it kind of ties in with everything we've been kind of talking about here, but at the end of the day, uh, I think it'd just be great to get people fired up, a little more fired up about, about participating. Uh, and I think that's, that's the cultural shift that we need to see. And maybe it's because, you know, of, of, maybe, maybe it'll be possible because of COVID and, and people wanting to come out of their, uh, come out of the isolated shell after COVID, but, uh, I think it would be great to see, uh, you know, as Sean was saying, more of the, more of the clubs, uh, you know, working together, more, more integration, um, and just, this, I guess, uh, just a more of an active community feeling.
Thank you. Carol, so to you, are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to governance happening in town or not happening that you'd like to see encouraged?
Um, I would like maybe some better directions to all of the trails around the area. There's so many of them and I don't think I know very many of them. I mean, the sidewalk's fabulous and so many people use them, but we have such a vast array of things. I know there's some over by the high school, but I, I believe there's a lot more. Um, and maybe just like signs. I know there's the one off of Main Street that is very prominently posted. Um, but there's just so many places to explore in this town that, um, shouldn't be nicely kept secrets. Um, so maybe just promoting more of our beauty and the lakes and, of course, the beach, um, and just get people outdoors again now that we're free to be able to do that. Um, and again, that could come with some introductory package of the town that might have maps and just all kinds of stuff that we can have access to.
Great. Um, and we do have one last call from the, from the public and then we'll have the closing statements. I'm not sure who I started with again with that, so I've lost my place, uh, but I'll just go directly to you, Carol, and then, and then Sean, and then Aaron. Um, and basically the question, questioner's asking, um, does anyone here have experience with municipal management?
No, I do not. I've been in, uh, business world, um, managing pharmacies and, uh, employees and stuff like that, but municipal, no.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, I worked, um, I volunteered in, uh, the youth parliament growing up. Um, so I was very active in the Scottish Youth Parliament, um, from two ninety, well, several years ago. Um, and, uh, I also, uh, work with the, the state budgets, um, as part of my role in the, um, in my job. So that, you know, budgetary-wise, that's pretty helpful. So, yeah.
Aaron?
I mean, for me, my main thing has been, you know, business and sales, um, you know, man, managing spreadsheets and stuff like that. Um, but I've not done anything directly municipal at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so we'll, uh, go with closing, uh, statements now and we'll go ahead and just start with you, Aaron. So just go around and, um, you have a minute or so. My last question, which I never got to answer, was why should people vote in this upcoming election? And so combine that, if you will, with your closing statement, because I think that's what you wanna say anyhow.
Right.
Go right ahead, Aaron.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Bruce, and, uh, thank you, Carol and Sean. Um, you know, this is, this is an important time right now, uh, in our community. Uh, you know, we're coming off this COVID, uh, pandemic. Um, you know, there's gonna be ramifications. You know, we're gonna be having to tighten our belts. Um, but at the same time, you know, I really see this as an opportunity, uh, an opportunity for us all to come together, um, in, in a, in a new and profound way. Um, and I think, you know, to do that, uh, we need to be just actively, I mean, very actively encouraging, uh, the participation of everyone. Um, everybody, everybody in town has something to offer, uh, whether it's an idea or, or some volunteer hours, um, or whatever it might be. Everybody has something to offer. And, uh, I think we really need to be, uh, you know, steadfast, yeah, in, in encouraging that. Uh, and that's what'll keep Reedfield growing. That'll, that's what is gonna keep, uh, Reedfield moving forward, uh, as, as we go on here. Uh, and again, my name's Aaron Neely and I'm a candidate for Select Board, uh, and I appreciate the time and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you. Um, we have such a wonderful town with great quality of life and just so many different opportunities for young and old, and I'd like to see that continue to be very strong and welcoming. Um, we moved away, uh, shortly for, um, middle school to help a family member and we could not wait to get back. It's just such a friendly, uh, welcoming village that we've lived in and have always felt that. And I hope we can keep that strong and everybody come together, stay positive, um, get out and, um, be amongst, you know, nice and friendly gatherings once again, once we are able to do that safely. Um, and appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Sean?
So I think you should vote, first of all, because it's such a privilege after living in some places around the world where that is not always the case. So I hope you can take your opportunity to vote and do so. Um, but, you know, I, I really, I hope you could hear that I, you know, my passion for this town, my passion for volunteerism and being a part of what can change, um, and just using, you know, my experience, um, in, in the world and rehab and as an educator, uh, that, you know, I can listen to people, I can work with a variety of groups. And, uh, you know, I know that we all have an opportunity and that there's plenty of things out there that can change and there's plenty of things that we can keep and maintain and get better. So, um, yeah, I hope to, uh, meet more of you and, uh, see how the vote goes in June.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Sean, all for, um, giving those signatures, putting yourself on the ballot and putting yourself in front of your fellow citizens. Uh, that's it for this broadcast of Candidates Night for the Select Board. In just about, uh, three or so minutes, we'll start with the school board candidates who are awaiting, uh, outside. So again, thank you, um, and best wishes.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to the candidates night. This is the second hour of the candidates night for for us to meet the school board candidates for RSU 38 school board. I'm going to be a little bit repetitive if you've been with us for the first hour, but if you're joining us, this information will be new and it's still be new for these candidates as well. I'm Bruce Pragoing. My job is to facilitate the questions and to try to pace us to cover as much as we possibly can in the hour that we have. I did prepare some possible questions and I shared those in advance for the candidates. Those were really just kind of primed up to prime the pump to hopefully not be used as much as we get public questions. The way you can ask a public question is in the chat if you're on Zoom. We are having some technical issues, but if you do have a question after we do a couple of initial rounds, please do type it into the chat and Bill will hand it to me. We might also have some time for the candidates to ask each other questions as well. I'm going to try to keep things moving along and one of my tasks is to avoid duplicative questions. The candidates will have a minute and a half each to answer a question. I have a yellow card that indicates 30 seconds are left. Once we're kind of establish a conversation flow, I'm not going to bother with with those time limits. If we're pacing okay, so I think and I think we'll be able to do that. The website has the Zoom link, so if you want to go to reedfield.org, that is where the Zoom link is and the telephone number and how you can type into chat. You can identify yourself or not as you wish, but really questions should be from Reedfield residents and voters. Our ground rules are very simple for both candidates and callers. Let's just be neighborly and courteous. We'll be posting this later on YouTube. We're live tonight on cable channel access seven. And so now we're going to meet the candidates who are running to serve you. And I'm going to ask each of you to introduce yourselves, starting with Sean and then followed by Patty and to tell us about your interest in running. And I will state upfront that you're both incumbents. Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, Bruce. And thank you for putting this together. My name's Sean Roderick. I've lived in Reedfield since December of 2012. My wife and I and my two children who both attend Reedfield Elementary, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. We moved to Reedfield because my wife has a background. She graduated from Uman Farmington with a background in education and she did a lot of research. We lived about an hour away and a lot of research in the area about the schools. And she, after calling, she actually called some of the principals to figure out their education philosophy. Decided we were going to live in this district, so we started looking for a house in the school district and I was signed up, had been involved in all the towns we had lived in in one way or another with the board or something. And I put a paper in to say I'd be interested in joining a board and it wasn't too long after I got a call from the current town manager who was like, hey, you kind of look like you might be a good candidate for the school board. Would you be interested in filling it out? Because they needed to appoint, fill out an application. And I did. And now it's been over seven years and it's been great being involved in the school board.
Thank you, Sean. Patty?
I'm Patty Gordon and I have lived in Reedfield since 1990. And when I moved here with my now husband and he grew up here, although he'll tell you he's really from Atlanta, but he lived here since he was eight, so it sort of counts. I've lived in Reedfield since December of 2012. My wife and I and my two children, who both attend Reedfield Elementary, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. We moved to Reedfield because my wife has a background. She graduated from Uman Farmington with a background in education and she did a lot of research. We lived about an hour away and a lot of research in the area about the schools. And she, after calling, she actually called some of the principals to figure out their education philosophy, decided we were going to live in this district. So we started looking for a house in the school district. And I was signed up, had been involved in all the towns we had lived in in one way or another with the board or something. And I put a paper in to say I'd be interested in joining a board. And it wasn't too long after I got a call from the current town manager who was like, hey, you kind of look like you might be a good candidate for the school board. Would you be interested in filling it out? Because they needed to appoint, fill out an application. And I did, and now it's been over seven years and it's been great being involved in the school board.
Thank you, Sean. Patty?
I'm Patty Gordon and I have lived in Reedfield since 1990. And when I moved here with my now husband and he grew up here, although he'll tell you he's really from Atlanta, but he lived here since he was eight, so it sort of counts. And I am a teacher and a librarian now. I was a teacher at Morana Cook Middle School for 20 years and am now a teacher and librarian at Oak Hill Middle School. And I was really excited to get involved with the school board here in our towns when I stopped being an employee of RSU 38 because I just really want to be involved with the school district and try to do whatever I can to work in conjunction with all these other folks to make our mission come to be.
Thank you, Patty. I think we already established that we don't get time limits. So we'll just go with the questions and move on. So I'll just start with a couple of questions and I'll give this one to you, Patty, first. How can local, how can the local community become more connected and involved in our schools?
We were just talking about this kind of thing. I think that I'm going to answer your question circuitously. The, the, one of the upsides of COVID, I think, are these Zoom meetings in a way because everybody has Zoom fatigue and all of that stuff, but more people are involved in more things, certainly in my life, in my world than prior to having all of this Zoom access or online access. And I hope that after the pandemic or wherever we're at next school year or now, people, more people will come to the school board meetings that are online and more people will contact us. It would be wonderful if folks contacted us, came to those meetings because I was, at the last meeting, I don't know if any of you on the TV were there, but there were so many celebrations and wonderful things that were happening. And as somebody, I have two, I didn't say this part before. I have two sons who graduated from Morana Cook and am currently empty nesting. So I don't hear about the amazing things that are happening except for at the school board meetings and I wish that more people did that, too. And also, our schools have amazing websites. I have been really impressed with the way that the websites have been kind of diversified and made more user friendly and have so much information on them from all of our schools and people can check out the websites maybe more often. So I, I hope that people come more often to board meetings and hear about all the really cool events that are happening in all of the schools.
Thank you. And so same question to you, Sean. How can a local community become more connected and involved in our schools?
Yeah, I mean, echo what Patty said, you know, it's right now because of the Zoom meetings, it's pretty easy. Sometimes you'll see people pop on making dinner, you know, it's informal, it's okay, you know, participate and, you know, in that, those type of ways. Also, you know, before COVID, before, you know, that seems to be a thing now, but before COVID, our schools would do a lot of things, letting folks know about what's being taught within education or community events. And I kind of felt bad sometimes because I would try to go with my, you know, the kids would be welcome or the principals or teachers would put a lot of effort into explaining what the new curriculum may be or asking input from the community. And there was very few people who showed up at those events. Sometimes it'd just be me and maybe one of the two other school board members. So I think when those events start happening again, I really encourage the community to come to those events and give their input because the school board and the administration and the, you know, are looking for input from the community. So I really encourage the community to come to those events and also encourage people to reach out. As Patty said, the websites have a lot of information, especially on the budget. I think it's in a user friendly format in the agendas. Reach out, not just when you have a complaint, but reach out if you have positive. As I said to Patty, it seems like I only hear from folks when they're wound up about something. It'd be nice to hear from folks with some positive input, so.
Great. And so Sean, I'll just continue with a question of you. I'm going to try to alternate back and forth, so it means you'll always be back to back on something and that's probably not bad. What are your personal goals for Morana Cook schools over the next three years? And what would you like to see RSU 38 accomplish during your term?
Um, I think right now, you know, I was working on some things I was talking to Patty about, which I'll get to, is really using the COVID dollars that we're getting, the money we're getting our school district, I don't want to misquote the number, but a significant amount of money. To use that to help make sure as much money as possible goes to the student to, you know, help. Like one of the things I'm excited about is if students who need the help are going to be offered summer school, we're using some of that money to offer summer school and then based on the response from that, the next tier will be offered. So I think that's great that students are going to have that opportunity for the month of July, who teachers think need that help to go to summer school. One of the things I'd like to see kind of long-term, once we get through some of this COVID stuff is, is we have a great dual enrollment program with Thomas College, but I'd like to see that with a community college so that students could graduate, maybe with a trade or something along those lines within one, you know, from Morana Cook High School with a trade. Because for, you know, some students, the ability to go to college or not have to go right into the workforce after they graduate, you know, that's the only option they have. And there are some opportunities, you know, through other work I do, there can be some agreements. And I'd like to see if that's, I'd like to work towards having that be a possibility where students may be able to graduate from Morana Cook with a degree from Kennamack Valley Community College or something along those lines.
Great. And so Patty, same question. What are your personal goals for Morana Cook schools over the next three years? And what would you like to see RSU 38 accomplish during your term?
Well, I, I feel like in the short term, I think that my personal goals have to do with doing everything I can to aid in the transition to next year or post-COVID school life. And I think especially, I think that there's a lot of attention to support. I hope that we can maintain the attention that is currently being given to supporting students in the ways that Sean just said, like with summer school programming and with supporting students' mental health needs, especially as we transition back to being all the time back at school. And, but I also really want to be involved in helping folks figure out how we can go back to having rigorous curricula without making it all feel like everyone's behind. Because that emphasis on the behind, even though everybody in the world missed a chunk of school, I, I feel, I just feel concerned about, I just want to figure out a way to do that with a more positive way. You know, I don't want to ignore what has happened, but I, anyway, I just would like to work with people to give some attention to that and make as smooth a transition as possible to returning to the awesome and rigorous curricula that is, exists in all of our schools without tons of, you know, rushing to catch up and these things like that. Since we know that rushing and playing catch up is not the best way of learn, for most people to learn. I also feel like I want to continue the work that a lot of people have been working on of making our schools a place that staff want to stay at. Ooh, I ended in a preposition. I, there were a few years where there was really high staff turnover in all of our buildings and that is less so than it was, but still significant. And I just want to keep working on, on that.
Great. Thank you, Patty. I would remind the public that if you are using the Zoom, the Zoom app, you can type a question into chat and it will be relayed to me so that we can answer it. It's your night and don't hesitate to do that. The next question is, and to you Patty first, is just tell us about your perspectives on education and its funding.
I think that my perspective is that we, you know, that the current funding formulas are not ideal, but I think that we need to just keep working in conjunction with the select board and town officials and doing everything that we can to get in information to and from people in the town so that we can work on school funding, education funding together in a really collaborative way.
Sean?
Yeah. When it comes to the school funding, I mean, there was an announcement today that the governors put out a supplemental budget to reach the 55%, whatever that number is, no one can agree on in the state if you ask. But anyway, to give a significant increase to hopefully to reach that goal. And one of the things I hope is as, you know, the state gives more dollars to local school districts, we use that to lower property taxes because there are folks who are struggling to pay that property tax that, you know, and if the state is going to dedicate more funds towards education, we don't just keep the current local municipality funding where it is and we use the state money to try to lower or at least even out the amount that the local property taxpayers pay. Because you see that sometimes in municipalities, when revenue sharing and stuff increases, the municipality just raises the budget and it doesn't bring that tax relief it's made to bring. So one of my goals will be as I believe there's going to be, I don't know if it's going to be as much as, you know, as people know who have been involved in state budget or have heard, it doesn't always come out how the governor proposes, but I think there's going to be more money for local schools and my goal is going to be to use that to try to lower property taxes and provide the best possible education we can to our students.
Great. Some of the questions I ask have nuances that relate to answers you've already given and that's okay. You can expand on those answers or use them to kind of, you know, talk again, if you will, about primary goals that you have. I do have a quick question for both of you. Is, I know that the school board meetings, the RSU meeting is going to be coming up. Can either of you share the time of that? Do you, do you have that on your calendar or something that you can tell us about?
The 18th?
7:00 p.m.? I want to say it's 7:00.
Is it, is it the 19th?
Sorry, I should know these.
I should too. I thought it was the 18th, but hang on.
It may be the 18th. I'm not sure.
19 is the Wednesday. Is it, it's the 19th?
Yep, 19th, that's.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And that is the, the annual public meeting, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, 19th.
And will that be at the school and will it be a public meeting?
Yes.
It is at the high school.
It's at the high school.
Unlike the bulk of the board meetings this year have been at the middle school, the, the budget meeting will be at the high school.
So great. So you have it straight from the horse's mouth there. So my next question is, and I guess I'll start with Sean. I've lost my place anyhow.
No worries.
Are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to schools happening in Maine or not happening that you'd like to encourage?
Trends that are happening? Okay, sorry, I was trying to get the help, but are there some trends?
They're never trick questions, so if they don't make a lot of sense, it's the fault of the writer, which is me.
I mean, I think when it comes to trends, I mean, you see this in, is getting, students, I saw this more before COVID, trying to get professionals into the schools to share, or folks into the schools to share about career paths and, you know, things like that. And I think that is great anytime that we can have folks share their career, you know, share their careers and different options in the world, you know, even at the younger levels. There's studies that have been done that kids are starting to think about. I saw one by the main state, you know, fourth grade. And the more we can get folks in the schools and share about what's out there in the world and there's, you know, I had a teacher in school, there was a bridge in the town, there's more between the, there's more to the world than between the bridge between Anson and Madison. You know, my goal is to get you beyond that bridge. That's what a teacher used to always say. So if we can kind of get students opened up to the world and what's out there, I think that's always a good thing.
Thank you, Sean. So Patty, same question. Are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to schools happening in Maine or not happening that you'd like to encourage?
The, what comes to my mind right away is the, and, and I don't know that this is separate from schools because I think this is everywhere, but that I, there is a trend, there's a national trend to consider issues of inclusivity on all levels in all ways. And I know that we have done some talking about that at the curriculum, the subcommittee of the board, the curriculum committee and what that might look like in the future. And that's something that I think is just really, really important for us all to do in big and small ways and think about inclusivity, not only in curriculum, but in policy and in everything that we do.
Patty, actually, that kind of prompted a question from me to both of you. And you mentioned the, the subcommittee you served on. Since you're both incumbents, do you serve as an officer or as part of any subcommittees?
Yep. I have been on the curriculum committee, the policy committee, and the Health Center Advisory Board.
I've been on the negotiation committee pretty much the whole time, which is.
A lot.
Spent a lot of work.
That's, that's a lot of hours.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I think we've come a long way in some of our contracts and stuff, so it's been great.
Well, we're, we're going to go back to coronavirus for a moment. It is an extraordinary time and it was an extraordinary time this past year for schools. What priorities would you see as important to consider as we deal with the coronavirus pandemic and its aftermath in our schools and in education generally? Sean?
Well, I think, you know, and I meant, I was going to bring this up earlier, but one of the things from the Corona, you know, I try to, you know, I tell my kids to, don't always think about the negatives. And one of the positives is every kid in our school, K to 12, now has some type of computer device, whether it be like my son in third grade, he has an iPad with a keyboard. The, my daughter in fifth, fifth grade has a laptop. So every kid in our district, which I think is pretty neat, has some type of device. So every kid's on even footing to do homework, do research. Our school did a great job making sure that everybody had access to the internet. They had the, I'm probably a Kajit, it's a type of thing where.
A mobile hotspot.
A mobile hotspot, basically. So every, they did a good, if, you know, to reach out. So I hope that continues beyond COVID, that every kid has technology so that they're kind of on that even footing. Because I know when I was in school, that wasn't the case and, you know, if I needed to do research and stuff, I'd have to try to find a local library and things like that. So I think that's pretty good. The other thing is, is, you know, Patty mentioned this, I don't want to see just always us talking about catch up, you know, catch up, catch up. Like let's figure out where the students are at and let's start challenging them where they're at when we come back into school. And I think that's a great, you know, and that sounds like what, from what we've been told, what we're going to be doing is, you know, they don't want to be talking about students being behind and things like that. And they don't want to keep students back, which I think is great to hear because a lot of this is no fault of the student, so. And, and the other thing, I know I'm going on a little bit, is I think COVID brought out, like opened, I know in my kids group, you know, I say my kids groups, but in the parents that my kids hang out with and stuff, the need in this community, like the need of kids who, or I say kids, but families who rely on the schools for, so they can go to work, so their kids have a couple square meals a day. That kind of opened my eyes, I know, and people I talked to, the food boxes, the community was amazing, donating food and donating money and stuff like that. And it kind of opened up the eyes that I think we need to, a lot of people, you know, a lot, I don't say a lot, but there are a number of people living on the edge of, and relying on the schools. And I think we need to keep those things going to make sure that kids have meals and have those type of things.
Thank you, Sean. So Patty, again, it's an extraordinary time. What priorities would you like, do you see as important to consider as we deal Corona, the coronavirus pandemic and its aftermath in our schools and in education generally?
Well, I am repeating myself, I think, a little bit with this one because I think, well, to piggyback on what Sean just said, I think this, I think that the priority of, we have done in RSU 38 a decent job, I think, a good, a great job. People have done a great job of trying to reach students who have been not reachable and to get people's needs, needs met in terms of food and what people need. I think that it would be just a very high priority to try to make sure that keeps happening and thinking about mental health needs, needs to keep happening. And I think our, the mental health folks in our district have been phenomenal. have been phenomenal. And we need to support them in whatever way we can so that they can continue to do the phenomenal stuff that they've been doing. Because I think this transition is going to be rough for everybody. And, or maybe it won't be. Maybe we'll just go, get to go back to school and it'll be glorious and everyone will be really appreciative. You know, I'm not sure. I think that that whole notion of, I think a huge priority is for us to be patient and flexible with one another about how we're going to meet kids' academic needs and meet them where they're at, like Sean was just saying. So there isn't the sort of push and blame game, like you're behind, you're behind, you missed half a third grade, and now you're, you know, never going to catch up. And that is just, could be super damaging. So I hope that we can continue to make a priority out of being flexible, proactive, and patient.
Thank you. We did have a question that came in over the chat. And I, and I will say, this chat, this question has some dollar amounts in it. So I don't know if they're correct or not, but just assume the spirit of the question, if you will, in answering it. So, and I'll start with you Patty, with this. RSU 38 received $2.6 million in COVID money. Do you think the superintendent should share an itemized report of where those funds were used?
I think that the superintendent, so I'm not going to talk about that dollar amount because I can't remember the total dollar amount of the COVID monies, the three grants that have come in. But I think that the superintendent is sharing how the money has been used in, my understanding from our last board meeting, Sean, jump in if I'm wrong, or if I'm right, is that at the annual meeting on May 19th, the budget meeting, the, and in the, in the news flyer that goes out to talk about what's going to happen in that meeting, there is some information about how the COVID monies have been spent. And it's not really specific, like line by line, but there is a, there's, the plan was for there to be a, like a suggestion to go to the website where there was going to be a link to an itemized budget of just how the COVID money was going to be spent. So that should be available on the website. And because that, I haven't seen it, I haven't looked for it. So I don't know if it's already there, but that should be there. And if it is there, I think the superintendent has done a fine job of telling people how the $2.6 million in COVID relief money has been spent.
Great. Do you want me to reread?
Yeah, no, I, Patty did a good job explaining it all. I guess I'll just add, I'll add that I know we were given this information as a board and I believe, and generally, again, because I had it, I believe it is posted on the website. If, and I'll go check tonight. And if it's not, I'll make sure it is. I know it is ready, readily available if any members of the public want it. And I'm sure the superintendent, from my experience, has always been great at getting back to anybody who's reached out to him. So if it's not there, we'll make sure it is. And I know it is available because we've, we've received it. And it was a priority of the board to make sure that the public knew what had been spent, just so that, because it's all in mine. And I said this at the board meeting, I'll say it tonight. To me, it's all taxpayer money, whether it came from the feds or local tax dollars. So I believe it is available. And if it's not, we will make sure it's up on the website.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So we got a straightforward answer to that. When we, when the Select Board candidates were talking, I let them also ask a question of each other if they wanted to. And that was completely unscripted and unprepared. But I welcome you to do that as well, if either of you has a question, or maybe it's just a conversation starter to, to ask of the other candidate. Would either of you like to do that?
I don't know that I have a question.
I don't know.
Okay.
One thing I want to, do want to bring up, and I can't believe we haven't mentioned it. And I think if Jay was watching, he'd be a little, is we have a bus driver shortage in our district, a severe bus driver shortage. And if it wasn't for, I mean, there were, there's been times where we've had to cancel bus runs and parents and last minute. And there, I don't want to spread a fear, but there is a concern if we don't attract some bus drivers, there could be some issues transporting students to events and stuff next year. So if anyone out there is a bus driver or has a bus driver's license, we desperately need you in RSU. And it's not just RSU 38, but it's really, I was talking to the Secretary of State about this not too long ago, Chenabels. And it's like a statewide issue. But if anyone's out there with a, looking for something to do, we desperately need bus drivers in this district.
Do you want to add anything to that or any other thoughts about positions or anything?
I don't have anything to add. I don't, yeah. I just was going to say regarding a question for you, Sean, I don't have one. And I think that I don't have one because if we were offered that opportunity three years ago, when I didn't know you, I might have had a question. But I feel like we, this year has been really intense on the board and lots of stuff. We've had lots of opportunity to talk to each other and as Reedfield people, and as, just as board people. And I, I don't really have questions.
No, I know. We spend a lot of time together.
Yeah. And to kind of clarify, you'll be voting for two people for school board positions. So actually, the two of you are unopposed in essence.
Right.
Great. We'll go back to the questions I have. And again, some of these just wrap around, maybe you reiterating or expanding on something you previously said. And I'll go to Patty first. Do you see any significant goals that the school board as a whole ought to consider or items that you would like to see elevated as priorities?
I think that what, what I said at the last question is true for this question too, and that the priority of working with everyone, all stakeholders to collaborate to make sure we have the smoothest post-COVID transition possible is, that's number one.
Yeah, I would agree, the smoothest transition and just everyone, you know, be willing, parents, staff, school board members, be patient with the return. You know, there's going to be some, you know, there's always bumps in the road, but remain positive. Because I know in my two students, when teacher, you know, everyone has bad days, when there's tension in the air, the kids feel it. And we all need to stay as positive as possible.
Great. So this is actually the last question that I have before we go to closing thoughts. This is a little shorter than the previous hour, but that's because I'm talking to two people instead of three. So if you are still watching and you have a question that you're dying to ask in the chat while we're talking through this next question, which will be a brief one, I think, you might want to call, you might want to type that in right away. I, I do want to just pause for a minute and salute both of you for running for public office and asking for votes and support from your fellow citizens. It's an honorable thing to do, and you have been serving. So that's honorable as well. And, and I just want to, on behalf of the community and the people who are watching, thank you for doing that. So why should people vote in this election, Sean?
To me, it's, you know, I thank everyone who's voted in the past. But to me, anytime there's an election, we, you know, I've voted since I've been able to vote, since I was 18. It's important for people to participate in their, in democracy. And, and it's, you know, it's a freedom to do so. You can show up or you can, I don't know if absentee balloting has started yet.
I, I believe it has.
Yeah.
Or at least the time period has started. There's been some availability issues, but I, I'm pretty sure you can check with the town website and that information's there.
So it's pretty easy, people, as, you know, when there is availability, as Bruce said, check the website. You can pretty much stop by and vote anytime when the town, when, when the town is open. And I, and so I think it's important for people to participate. And there's other issues on the ballot. I know there's a whole slew of issues when it comes to the town. And I think there's a meeting tomorrow night to go over that.
Yes, there is.
Yep, the meeting to go over tomorrow night. And I would encourage people, if they have questions about the school board budget, to come out on the, the 19th and get, you know, voice any, you know, or get any questions you have answered there. And, you know, I appreciate everyone participating. And as I've said before, not just when it comes to the election, but I wish more people would come out to the school board meetings and share their thoughts. Because the more, you know, more ideas we have, the better.
Great. Patty, why should people vote in this upcoming election?
Well, I think Sean kind of said it all. I think in order for us to be the most effective that we can in leadership of our school districts, we need people to, well, for any aspect of our town, we need everybody's input and people to voice their views so that we can have discussions that reflect what's happening in our town with the people, with the people who have the views. Because that is just the way to have it be the most democratic and the most effective.
Great. So we're going to go to closing statements now. And this is your opportunity to, to just talk to the community directly for a minute or two. And Patty, you're first.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for, I want to thank you, Bruce, for making this evening happening. And it's a great opportunity to be able to share this with the people of our town. And I also want to thank you, this is not answering your question, but for your service, which I really, really appreciate on the Select Board. So, yeah, I just thank you for organizing it and making it happen.
Great. Sean?
Yeah. In closing, I, you know, want to echo what Patty said. Thank you, Bruce, for your service. And always, not all the select boards would come when we offered the opportunity. And you and many board members always came and offered input. And I, I appreciate that. So thank you for all you've done for the town of Reedfield and participating in that process. So I appreciate that. And I just encourage the community, again, I know I've said it probably multiple times, but reach out, you know, when there's, if you have ideas, thoughts. I always say there's no dumb idea, you know, don't, if you have any ideas, thoughts, we're always looking for input. I've enjoyed, you know, working with Patty and the other school board members. I think we have a good team here in Reedfield. And it's great to have a full slate because not all communities have a full slate. And it's great that we have that. And I've enjoyed it. And I look forward to continuing the work.
So thank you very much, Sean and Patty. This concludes our evening. The video for this evening will be posted on Reedfield's YouTube channel. Just kind of in closing, I want to, you know, we, on a regular show, we roll credits. But there's been a man in the booth there named Bill Staret, who orchestrates all of our television and streaming and, manages questions and ran out here with questions for, that came from the audience. And I'm very appreciative to him and to the town manager, Eric Dyer, who does a lot of the behind the scenes work and setting up things of this nature. And finally, you, the public, for tuning in. So thank you and good night.